Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Susan Smith Walker of Missionary Exodus Outreach Church.
Amen. Let us pray. Eternal and most wise God, we thank you for such a beautiful evening and a great turnout, oh God, and we ask you to be with us now and give us great wisdom as our elected officials and people from the community come together to do the business of the city of Hickory. Help us now to do the greatest good for the greatest number. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call on Mr. Honeycutt with Truth 387 from our Savior Lutheran and let him either introduce all of these fine young men with him or let them introduce themselves.
Thank you. We're glad to be here tonight. We're working on our citizenship and community merit badge, so we brought our boys with us. I'm Mike Honeycutt, I'm the assistant scoutmaster. We have Mike Greco and Mike Baker as our other two leaders. The boys will stand up. I want you to introduce yourselves. Bill, we'll start with you.
Well, Mark, good day, you so good a leader.
You go, Cassie Sledger.
Tom Wilson, Peggy Baker.
Daniel Schul.
Jonathan Baker.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good to have you. And Dave Gissi for a Business Well-Crafted Award.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry and Mr. Crone. Again this evening, it's my privilege to represent the city of Hickory in the presentation of the Business Well-Crafted Award, which we've been now awarding for a little over a year. Tonight's recipient has earned this award by being in business for over eighty years. But more importantly than having been around for eighty years, they are a business well-crafted because of the superior quality of the furniture that they create on a daily basis. So we are honored this evening to make the presentation to Cox Furniture Manufacturing Company. They began in 1932. William Cox, who was a furniture industry pioneer in the area, founded the business and focused on small-scale boudoir furniture. The company was so successful that in the 1950s, when Mr. Cox passed away, the employees formed a buying group and took over the business and operated it until in 1972, the Romeo family came in and purchased the business. And under their management and guidance, the business has thrived. They've gone through four plant expansions, they've expanded the product line, and included in that is a custom line known as the perfect fit, I believe, to meet the needs of customers that are out there. And because of all of these achievements and growth, they have earned a leading position in the furniture industry. This well-earned reputation that they have is because of the pride and the ownership everyone at Cox Furniture takes with every piece that goes out the door. Some additional proof of the pride that they take in the manufacturing that they do is that they offer a lifetime warranty with their product. And a feather in their cap is that some of their pieces are in the White House. And probably makes one of very few things with a guarantee in Washington right now. So this truly makes Cox Furniture a business well-crafted for our community, our nation, and throughout the world. And we're honored tonight to be able to make this presentation on behalf of the city of Hickory. It's my privilege to be able to present to you the Hickory Business Well-Crafted Award. It has Cox Manufacturing listed, and it says presented by the Hickory Business Development Committee, thanking businesses for more than seventy-five years of doing business in the community. Congratulations very much.
Well, on behalf of my company, Cox Manufacturing, I just do want to say thank you very much. It is indeed an honor, and, you know, hopefully we're going to be here for many more years to make well-crafted furniture and hopefully employ the good citizens of Hickory and the surrounding area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Eighty-two years, something like...
He doesn't look it, does he?
He started out as a child.
Something like ninety percent of businesses don't make it ten. Dan Green has an announcement and information concerning a golf tournament for national Alzheimer's awareness, and it has an international name associated with that tournament.
It's, well, the name of the... Thank you for the invitation to be here. I am Mr. Green, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council for this opportunity to speak. The name of the tournament is called A Round to Remember. It's a grassroots program that works to educate people about Alzheimer's and to raise awareness for those facing the disease. Over five million Americans have Alzheimer's, and there are fifteen million people acting as their caregivers. I am here for the company for which I work, Meridian Senior Living. We manage assisted living facilities, and we're the fifth-largest memory care provider in the nation. And we are sponsoring this golf tournament to benefit Alzheimer's, and we are doing this along with the Conde Nast Media Organization. Conde Nast publishes magazines like Golf Digest, Conde Nast Traveler, and Bon Appetit. And the purpose of the tournament, as I said, is to raise awareness and to raise funds for Alzheimer's. This tournament will be held at the Old Still Golf Club in Oliver's Landing section across the lake here on the north end of town. And the tournament is going to be held on Thursday, June the nineteenth at nine a.m. There are opportunities for other individuals and entities to be sponsors and donate to the tournament for the benefit of Alzheimer's. I have a lot of information about entry fees and sponsorship levels and all that. And if there's someone you would like for me to designate for me to send this to, I can send the council all of the details about the tournament and what's involved with registration and all that. But we wanted the citizens of the city to know about the tournament, and we hope that this will accomplish the goals of the organization and benefit people with Alzheimer's.
Thank you, sir. If you will get that to Mr. Berry.
Okay, I'll do that.
I'm sure he will distribute it to all of us.
All right, I'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve the minutes of May sixth.
Let me approve it.
Just add other people that can speak. We have persons requesting to be heard. Thank you all. It's already been a long meeting. Mr. Cliff Moon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cliff Moon, 2925 Eighth Street Court, Northeast Hickory, North Carolina. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Berry, Mr. Crone. I hadn't planned to speak tonight at all, but after hearing Ms. Locke speak at the Inspiring Spaces meeting that we had just before the council, I wanted to just add again my wholehearted support and encouragement to you. I know, as you sat up there tonight earlier and spoke and considered, and you're in a contemplative mood about this, but one of the things that I was looking for and hoping for, because it was to the members who weren't here, the folks that weren't here tonight that are here now, it was a very, it was an excellent report. It was very interesting, and it was very well put forth by Mr. Shuford. I want to tell again a very brief story because it reflects to me my life in Hickory. When I came here in 1988, as you know, to serve a church, Hickory was really just taking off and doing a lot of wonderful things and a lot of growth and a lot of excitement. And the nineties were that way for our church and for a lot of other folks here. Long story short, in 2002, I had a very, very mild heart attack and ended up having surgery up at our wonderful Fry Hospital here. But while I was there briefly during that time, and they were getting me ready to go into surgery, my heart stopped. And it wasn't very long. It was maybe fifteen to thirty seconds at the most, but I woke, I was awakened to a nurse slapping me in the face like this, saying, "Not on my watch, you don't." And I really appreciated that lady, my wife, but it reminded me that we've gone through, you know, ten, twelve years of not being dead for certainly, not this city, but being a city that has been, in some ways, on life support and feeling that way at times. And sometimes, you know, just, you know, the way you feel when you just come back. But there was somebody saying tonight, "Not on your watch, not on your watch let this happen. We have an opportunity here." And I want you to have the enthusiasm. I know you will. I know what you're thinking about, but, and I was promised that by members of the committee, but I want you to have the enthusiasm that Ms. Locke has and had here tonight, moving this thing forward. Because it is up to you, the leaders of this community and others of us, to go out there and let the folks know the information about how much it's going to cost. I think I'm still the only person to this point, and I hope others will follow, who have stood here and said, "When the budget was presented," and I'll do it again tonight, "because I heard the same number." I'm one of those people that has a house that's just a little over that $150,000 range that you talk as the average home in Hickory. For you to raise my taxes over that period of ten years, $120, it, oh gosh, is something that, you know, it doesn't, isn't fearful to me at all. It is something that says, "I'm going to invest in this city for the next thirty, forty, fifty years, and after I'm gone planting those shades." Lastly, I wanted to say, I read somewhere that the fastest-growing area in Catawba County, and this is good news, but is Cheryl's Ford. I don't want to see my city left behind. I don't want us to be on this side of forty falling behind when we can be moving ahead. So I hope you will aggressively go forth and support the Inspiring Spaces initiative as I will for you as well. Thank you.
Actually, we have a part of that group of our water lines. Well, one of the things that we have insisted on is growth throughout our metropolitan area is good for Hickory. But we want growth in Hickory. And I suspect that of that four-hundred people that this county has grown by since 2010, I suspect a big chunk of them are in the Denver, Cheryl's Ford area. And we can live with that. We're not casting stones, but we want the growth to be here. Spoken like an evangelist. That's Reverend Moon, in case you don't know. And also, I'd like the record to show he has a heart. Okay. Motion's due... I couldn't resist.
Mayor, I would move approval of the minutes for May sixth.
Motion by Mr. Seaver, second by Mr. Giss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It's unanimous. Everyone is present. Motion to reaffirm or ratify on second reading?
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
This will be approved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion is carried. Informational item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One item of information is a report of Mayor Wright's travel to Raleigh for the League of Municipalities Board Meeting, which was held on May fourteenth.
Very quickly, let me give you a little quick update of what we talked about at that meeting. Some of you were here at the previous meeting and heard us talk about the fact that a law has been enacted that would restrict growth in property taxes in any municipality or county to eight, no more than eight percent in a year, even with voter approval. That was one of the issues we talked about. A second issue is that we've been discussed is the privilege license that brings in about $1.3 million. Am I setting you up, Mr. Berry?
Yes, sir.
About $1.3 million a year here that, under the proposed change, would bring in about $500,000 a year here, or could be eliminated altogether. Those were the main things discussed at that meeting, and of course, the gist of it was we would sort of like to see the legislature, you know, let us continue to have some latitude at governing our cities.
First item of new business is a public hearing. When the city created a youth council, you created it via an ordinance, and per city code, when you amend an ordinance, it requires a public hearing. And it's just my absolute pleasure this evening to introduce and present to you the chair of your youth council, Ms. Toni Abernathy, who is a senior at Hickory High and will be attending ECU this fall, and she will present this item to city council prior to the public hearing. Ms. Abernathy.
Hello. Good evening. As you said, my name is Toni Abernathy, and I currently hold the position of Youth Council Chair. And the purpose of youth council is basically just to foster participation in government by all students and also to help students learn more about our city government so they would want to move back to Hickory in the future and to want to encourage them to actually participate in all things government in Hickory. Well, this year, the youth council, we've participated in a dance marathon. Actually, we helped host at the dance marathon at Neal Clark, and we raised over $1,000 for the backpack program of Catawba County, which helps hungry children on weekends who aren't able to buy food or their parents aren't able to buy them food, and that just gives them a meal throughout the weekend. And then we also hosted, just this past Saturday, a youth sports camp, which was free to ages six to eleven, and that was just a, it was a good turnout for our first one, and it was really fun just to be able to, be able to show healthy living amongst teens and youth of Hickory. And the proposed change, the ordinance, would increase the number of youth council members from twenty-five to thirty. And increasing the number of members will allow there to be more participation on the state level. Because whenever we go to state youth council conventions, we always have three, two, maybe one person coming to those conventions because of cost and also because we don't have that many people on our council. We only have twenty-five, which doesn't allow for people's schedules to work out. And if we increase the number to thirty members, then this allows for us to have maybe five to six people come to those conventions, and we'll have more participation on that level. And with the ordinance, proposed ordinance change, this would increase Hickory High's number of members to seven and St. Stephen's number to seven members, and we would add one at-large candidate to make, to increase it to ten. And we would just really like to have this, this increase. Obviously, I won't be on the council next year, but I hope to hear from Dave Leonetti, who is not here tonight, that the increased change will bring greater good to Hickory and the youth of Hickory. And thank you.
Thank you, Toni. And thank you all for what you did for the library, the new youth section.
Yes, that's been, that's been about three years in the making. Well, four, actually. It was my freshman year. It was brought upon everyone's attention that we should have an art wall in a teen area. So it's great to finally see that.
So we cut the ribbon last week, wasn't we?
Yes.
Thank you, Toni. Appreciate it.
Thank you for all your work.
Before we have this first public hearing tonight, I'll go through the ground rules for public hearing. We first ask that those who want to speak against the proposal be heard. We ask that they limit their remarks to fifteen minutes. Then we say those people who are in favor of the proposal can be heard. We ask that they limit their remarks to fifteen minutes. Then we have rebuttal and serve rebuttal if necessary. If we, if one side takes more than fifteen minutes, we make that available to the other side as well. And we try not to ever let anybody leave here who has something they want to say without saying. With that, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against the proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for the proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
I'll make approval.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Patton, multiple seconds, but Mr. Lael was the loudest. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
For the next public hearing, I'll ask Mr. Cal Overby to come to the podium and present a voluntary contiguous annexation.
Thank you, Ms. Berry, Mayor Wright, members of council, Mr. Crone. The item for tonight for public hearing is a request by Bobby Lee and Patsy Hedrick for the voluntary annexation of their property located 1515 Clonachamille Road in Northeast Hickory. Background for the property, again, is owned by Bobby Lee and Patsy Hedrick. It's a voluntary contiguous annexation. Again, the property located 1515 Clonachamille Road. It's just a four-tenths of an acre of property, or around 17,000 square feet. The immediate ward district adjacent to the property will be Ward Two. The current development of property is a single-family residence currently occupies the property. Future will remain the same. This is their primary residence. And the request for annexation is being sought in order to obtain connection through the city sanitary sewer system. Run through a few maps here to get bearings in geography in the area. The property in question is outlined in red. The yellow, the area shaded in yellow is in the city's ETJ area, and the area shaded in blue would be our current city limits. So we're merely contiguous as Clonachamille Road is actually inside the city limits of Hickory. This is a little dark in comparison to the area you have saw about the colored picture there. This, again, this is the residents in question. This is a fast, fresh food mart. This would be Sixteenth Street or Sandy Ridge Road, Clonachamille Road, and Cool Park Road, Sandy Ridge Baptist Church, and some vacant land here. This is the falls at Clonachamille Development. And pretty much residential all around here except for the convenience store there at the intersection. With regard to zoning, again, this is currently located in our ETJ, so the city currently has zoning authority over the property zone, R1 Residential, which is basically a low-density residential. It does have a large area of neighborhood commercial to the south of the property, again, being a convenience store, vacant property, part of the property of Sandy Ridge Baptist Church, and as well in this area here, and R2 Residential, more single-family residential in this area. Staff reviewed the application that was submitted in light of the requirements that we have to with regard to state statutes as well as public services, and we found the following items. The annexation petition did comply with all applicable state annexation statutes. Adequate public services are available, and those public services are not expected to fall below current levels should the property be annexed. Again, based upon these findings, staff does recommend annexation of the property. And I will close and entertain any questions to council man.
Questions? Thank you, Mr. Overby. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion.
Will be approved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Meisner, second by Mr. Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Moving to departmental reports, we have one this evening, which I'll present to council, and that's to present to you the city manager's recommended 1415 fiscal year annual budget. I need the clicker to do that. And the action for council tonight is to call for the public hearing on the budget recommendation, which would be at your June third city council meeting. Just to kind of overview the budget, it's $95.8 million. This is actually a 6.1% increase over the current year's budget. However, that increase is driven largely by several capital projects. I know sometimes people get excited about year-to-year variations in governmental budgets, but in a city our size, capital intensive in fire and technology and police, et cetera, that number will go up and down depending on equipment that we're buying from year to year. So when you normalize it in terms of the operating budget, dealing with the capital, it's a 2.1% increase over your current operating budget. As we had a discussion in the previous meeting, unfortunately, we continue to see very little natural growth in revenue. What we mean by that is simply growth in your, in your property tax base or growth in sales tax activity. And as we come toward the end of the presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about, more about the future. Although this budget was a challenge, next year's budget may be even more of a challenge. And I started off and forgot to do my most important job, and that is to thank Warren Wood and Kelly, Karen Hurley for the great job that they do putting this budget together and also the department heads. It's fun to be a budget person when revenues are growing by five, six percent a year, and you're trying to figure out how best to allocate those funds. It's tedious, it's difficult, it's challenging. When every meeting begins with where are we going to cut, what can't we do, what do we have to do without? And so I really appreciate the teamwork that all the department heads bring to the table as we have those difficult discussions and meetings. I'm proud of the fact that the culture we have in the city organization doesn't pit departments against each other. There's no sense of horse trading. There's no arguing and fighting among the departments. Everybody recognizes the times that we're in, and they really work collaboratively to put together a budget, and appreciate Warren's great work in that and Karen as well. So as we talk about the general fund, this is somewhat of a historic budget. It's been nineteen years since the city manager has sat in his chair and recommended a tax increase. And as all streaks begin, all streaks come to an end. Your general...
It's the first time they called for a rate increase.
Correct, I'm sorry. A property tax rate increase. The recommended general fund budget is $46.2 million, and it's based on a property tax of 52 cents per hundred dollars in value. And so that's a two-penny increase over your current rate of 50 cents per value. So let's talk for a minute about what I feel like is driving the need to increase property tax by two cents. It's no surprise that I had Mr. Hanson do a very in-depth discussion about our road paving situation throughout the city, because it really rose to the top, and we've been talking about it for the last couple of years, that a city our size with the amount of lane miles we have and a resurfacing budget of about $450,000, we are now on a cycle, if we were to continue, that every street on average would get touched once every sixty years. And that's really beyond the life cycle of a city street. So I'm recommending a penny, which will effectively double the amount of funding that goes toward paving our streets. That's not going to have some kind of big dramatic impact. It's really just going to take us back to what the standard should be and be repaving streets about once every thirty years. We feel like this is important because, as Mr. Hanson discussed at your last meeting, if you don't catch the streets at certain points, then the cost gets bigger and bigger and bigger because the streets continue to deteriorate, and it goes from being a couple of inches of asphalt that will maintain them for another twenty years to completely digging it up, putting down new base, et cetera, and basically rebuilding your streets. And so we feel like we're kind of at a critical juncture that if we don't And so we feel like we're kind of at a critical juncture, that if we don't catch it now, it's going to continue to grow and be a significant problem for the city in the future. The second penny is really based on the revenue losses and lot lack of revenue increases that we've seen over the last several years. And there's a host of revenues, but the big ones obviously are property tax, which we've seen that go down for two years, and then very anemic growth, and I'll talk about that in a second. In very simple, basic terms, your revenue growth has not kept pace with expenditures. In a minute, I'll also talk about some of the cuts and changes that we've made to make that balance for the last several years, but we feel like we're at the point where that's no longer possible. And one of the tipping points is the fact that in the coming fiscal year, 1415, you're going to lose $255,000 that was a reimbursement from the state of North Carolina for changes that the General Assembly made to property tax years ago. We call it the hold harmless in-house. It simply means that years ago, the General Assembly decided that certain inventories were no longer going to be included in property tax. They recognized the negative impact that was going to have on cities, so they said, okay, cities who will lose money in this, we'll hold you harmless. We will cut a check from the state and pay you that. The hope was that the overall tax base would grow enough in that period of time that we would break even. Unfortunately, as the mayor pointed out, our tax base just has not grown, has not grown significantly. So it has continued to be $255,000 that we've received from the state of North Carolina that we will not receive in the coming year. So the impact of a two penny increase in the tax rate on the average home in Hickory will be $2.50 a month. Other highlights in the general fund is fund balance. We're recommending appropriating $1.4 million in fund balance. $900,000 of that is actually used for the capital expenditures that I mentioned, talking about how just the overall budget is up. So about $500,000 of that is going in toward normal operating expenses. Now, you all who have worked with the city budget for a number of years kind of understand how this works. We don't anticipate actually spending the $500,000 worth of reserves. We're very conservative in the way we budget revenue. We always expect to gain a little bit more revenue than what we have in the budget. We've had a form of a hiring freeze, we've kind of started calling it a soft hiring freeze, because we've basically frozen all the positions and eliminated them that we figured out how to do without with reorganization and different assignments. Now, we're really just kind of dragging our feet and asking the department to try to make ends meet for a month or two, to save a little bit of money on the expenditure side. So what typically happens is at the end of the year, you collect a little bit more revenue than you budgeted, and you expend a little bit less than you budgeted. And that number covers that amount of fund balance that you applied, so that reserve amount doesn't actually get spent, it gets covered. We've gotten to the point where that $500,000, so $900,000 we planned for for capital, but that $500,000 we do not feel will be covered in increased revenue and less expenditure throughout the year. That's part of how that one penny plays into the budget plan. If you got into a habit of spending your reserve to meet your operating needs every year, because the city is in good financial health, you could do that for a period of time, but you basically are putting yourself on an unsustainable path. It's kind of budget 101, you can't spend one-time money for ongoing expenditures, and your reserves are just that, they're a pot of one-time reserves. As I mentioned, basically no growth. When you got to go out to three decimals to find growth in your property tax base, you're not having any growth. And in the past three years, it's actually declined 3.5%. So I'd kind of stop here and say, you know, the conversation that we had in the last meeting about making investments in the city to spur growth, that's not something that's future. That's something that you're feeling and experiencing right now in your budget. Because even though we've had some great investments and some high-profile, wonderful projects with the mill redevelopments and others, in the scheme of a four, over $4 billion tax base, you're not making up for the loss of businesses that are leaving and values that are decreasing. So we really are at a crossroads. And I would say that's been our single biggest challenge as we've gone through the recession. You know, we were dealing with job losses before the national recession hit, so we were already in a difficult, tight spot, and then the recession came along about the time we were optimistic that maybe things were starting to improve. So let's switch gears and talk, go ahead. Yes, sir.
That .001, that is, that's correct, that's $4 million out of 4 billion.
Yep, that's right.
And that's the product of?
New buildings.
Demolitions and devalue against permits.
Yep, that's it. The county only revalues property once every four years, and so, you know, for those of us who just own a business or a home, if we didn't do anything different, that value stays in place for four years. So it's new stuff and stuff leaving that creates your tax base either growth or reduction year to year. And we'll talk in a minute about the revaluation and what we're seeing there. Better news in the water and sewer fund. You know, it's a great blessing, and in so many ways, we're living off the wisdom and the foresight of future, previous city councils that invested in infrastructure for water and sewer, because we've got a very strong regional system, annual budget of $25.8 million. Of course, that system pays for itself. Nobody's tax dollars go into fund the water and sewer. That's all paid completely by the monthly bills that each of us pay when we're connected to the city system, and the contracts, which are numerous and have a lot of volume, where we sell water and even provide sewer services to neighboring municipalities. So consistent with council policy that you adopted several years ago, we're looking for a 1.5% increase, which is consistent with the CPI. We feel like that's been a smart practice of the city to keep pace with your expenditures so that your water and sewer fund stays healthy. The average residential water bill will go up 82 cents a month. We do have a major project that you awarded the design on a few months ago to build a $2 million pump station and sewer line installation that will actually move sewer from a neighboring community where we're paying to have it processed and put it at your Henry River wastewater treatment plant where we have capacity. And that's a good, smart business investment, because you'll recoup that $2 million in about five years, and so you'll save your water and sewer system a significant amount of money each year. Also, as you know, we, several years ago, bought the Catawba, Town of Catawba's entire system, water and sewer. Entered into a 50-50 partnership with Catawba County to expand that plant to 1.5 million gallons. That construction's coming along well, and so in your upcoming budget, we're recommending that you add staff to operate this new plant. And again, that will be paid for by the users of the plant, and by Catawba County if it runs a deficit. We'll continue, as we have, to be a regional water and sewer provider, and you all, just at your last meeting, approved an example of that, the contract for the Town of Longview to provide them water. So these partnerships are, as the mayor pointed out, we're about growth in our whole MSA, our whole region, and these partnerships help our neighboring communities. Water and sewer is an extremely expensive endeavor. Smaller communities simply cannot afford to do it. Again, we've set ourselves up historically to be a regional provider, and so it's good for our residents to have this large system and get the benefit of selling water to our neighbors, and it's good for our neighbors as well, because they frankly, you know, won't be able to afford it at some point in time, and that's kind of how it works. They come to us when they get to a critical cost point, and we work out a contract with them.
I see that four of our top five water users are municipalities.
Yeah, that is big. And you think about what it used to be when we had the mills that used a lot of water, and it's been great that we've been able to now, in effect, sell that to other communities. So let's spend a minute and talk about our personnel. Oh, I'm sorry, got my slides out of order here. Let's talk about solid waste. Sanitation's important.
Oops.
Don't hurt me there, John. Mine's not in sync with what I got up there. So your solid waste fund is just under $6 million, and it's been your policy for the last several years to just gradually look at how that can continue to pay its way with the user fees that are collected each month. And so I'm recommending, as we have in past years, to bump that up $1.50 a month from 15 to 1650 a month. I'm happy to report that we're still priced below private competition. If you were to seek to have your trash collected by a local carrier, your bill would be significantly more than what you pay to the city. One thing that's exciting, and again, part of the capital expenditures, is that we are ramping up this year with capital in terms of equipment purchases to be prepared to go to single-stream recycling in 1516. And what that means is they will no longer sort at the curb. You know, the way it works now is we all put our little bins out there, and the truck comes by, and they pick up our bin, and they separate the glass and the paper and the magazines in bins on the truck. And that inherently limits the amount of recycling that you can offer in a community. So with our partnership with Republic Waste, all of us in the region are moving to single-stream, which means we will have a big rollout, just like we do for our trash. It'll be picked up every other week, and we'll be able to expand the number of items that are recycled, and it'll be a truck, just like our trash trucks, that come by and pick it up and dump it and haul it to the MRF where it's bundled and sold. And Mr. Hanson made a presentation to you about that recently, showing how that's going to work a year from now, but we've got to gear up for it this year with capital purchases. Now, let's talk about our great folks. I am recommending six new positions be added. I've touched on most of those. The police department, as things change with cell phones and technology, has seen the need to have really a specialized person who can get into tablets, phones, computers, and extract information that we need to do criminal investigations. When you ask a police officer to do that, it's a real challenge for them, although they're very bright men and women. They're not trained to the level that we need in the technology that's so available today. And so after a lot of discussion, we felt like that was an effective position, something that we need in the police department. I've already mentioned the three wastewater treatment plant operators. Again, those are paid for from the system, and specifically from the Catawba area. The utility locator specialist, which the state is requiring us to hire, and that will be funded by the water and sewer fund. And then a fleet maintenance mechanic. As you know, the city runs its own garage, we're very happy with that operation. We've done cost comparisons, and we've also benchmarked against other communities every year, and that's a very effective operation. But we're a little bit understaffed there, and so we're asking to add a maintenance mechanic. So two of the positions of the six are actually paid from general tax dollars of the city, and the other four are covered through the fees in the utility system. Just to kind of put that in perspective, 10 years ago, the city had 684 full-time employees. Even with the addition of the six positions I'm requesting, we're at 654. We're still operating at roughly 5% below where we were 10 years ago. And that's, the credit is to the 650 employees of the city, we've got great people.
That's about a 5% reduction in employees with a 5% increase in the population serving.
That's right.
But we have added in police and fire.
We have, that's right. We've added a ladder company, and about 10 years ago, we added in the police department as well. That's right, Mr. Mayor. So really, you net, you put those into it, and you realize that it's been more than a 5% reduction in the other departments.
And that doesn't mean the other departments aren't important. It just means that when necessity requires action, we have done it without hampering those key services.
So I'm recommending a 1.75 and a 2.25, so it'll end up averaging around 2% merit-based annual raise for our coworkers, and that will go into effect in October. And our health insurance plan has been aggressively managed, and again, I want to tip my hat to Warren and to the members who serve on our committee, and Mike Bennett and others, they do a fantastic job of constantly reviewing that plan and being very aggressive in our wellness program as well. And we think that's one of the reasons that we've been able to keep our costs from escalating to the point that we can't afford it any longer. Let's look back for a minute before we look forward. This is a chart that we've been using a lot and beginning to talk about in the community that shows where we have been in terms of jobs. We recognize, I think all of us do, the loss of 45,000 jobs in our MSA, so that's not just the city, but that's all, that's our neighboring counties. And we realize we've had that, but when you compare it to the other MSAs in the state, you know, there are others who have lost, but we have lost more than all the rest. And maybe even more disconcerting is that that, along with the demographic trends that are going on with the baby boomers, we're losing that key demographic that Councilman Lael spoke about earlier, that is, 20 to 44-year-olds, we're actually losing, and that number total is 25%. And those are the folks who create new businesses, who are the people who build homes and are engaged in the community and have a lot of things going on that are beneficial to the city.
Well, that shows up also in the under-nine categories.
Yeah, that's right. You're going to have less children when you have less parents, absolutely. And the reason that I bring that up is to say that, as I said earlier, you're seeing the effects of that now. I mean, that loss of jobs, that loss of population is directly being seen in property tax and in sales tax. Supply and demand is going on in the housing market, and when you can buy somebody's house for less than tax value, that is going to get reflected in the next revaluation, because that's exactly how they come up with those numbers. You know, we are seeing some growth in our building permits, but again, when you capture all of that together, it's still flat. And so we're not really seeing, you know, in the tax revenues anyway, we're not really seeing the impact of kind of the slow national recovery that we're all hearing about. It is good news that you all have been very prudent in your practices and your policies and spending, that even through the downturn, the recession, you've maintained an adequate, maybe a little better than adequate, fund balance. We talk a lot about the different things that we've done over the last few years with hiring freezes, et cetera, and I've really kind of covered this issue already in terms of telling you that one of the pennies on the property tax rate is to maintain that good financial health that you have. Obviously, with a 25% fund balance, you can dip into that for a year or two, and you're not going to see a dramatic drop, and you're not going to get letters from the LGC telling you to change your practices. But it worries me when a community puts its foot on the path of unsustainable practices, because it just gets harder the next year. A couple of years down the road, it'll be two or three pennies that you'll need to increase it just to hold yourself harmless. So as staff, we're recommending that you go ahead and bite that bullet now and make up for those lost revenues. Revaluation is scheduled for January 1 of 2015. So your current year budget is not going to see any impact from revaluation, but obviously, we're already trying to look in the crystal ball and talk to the folks at the tax department and figure out what's going to happen to values next year, because they've gathered that data, they're starting to crunch it. Mr. Meisner already knows what those numbers are, because he's one of the people that's putting that information together that they end up collecting. And it goes back to the example I mentioned, when you're selling a home for less than its tax value, that information gets reflected to the tax department, and they revalue your property less than it's worth today. We don't know how much that decline is going to be, and we don't want to start a lot of speculation, but we've talked to neighboring communities who have already gone through this, and we're concerned that it's going to be significant. For example, Burke- For example, Burke County lost over 8% of their value when they did their revaluation. I don't know how you would accommodate that other than changing your rate to offset it. So that being said, you know, we focus a lot in this business on property tax rate. Really what matters is how much are people paying in property tax? When values are going up, they end up paying more. They may not like that. Sometimes councils reduce the rate a little bit to offset that if they don't need that much money. Now, we're in the opposite of that. Values are actually going to be going down. So it's very likely next year, I will be recommending that you increase the rate. It may still be revenue neutral overall. You won't be collecting any more taxes, but your rate will have to go up to make up for the fact that your overall tax base has gone down.
And that's what we did 10, 15, we went down.
That's right. 10, 15 years ago, you could go down significantly because the values were going up so much and you just didn't need that much revenue. Yep, the appreciation.
And we took the rate down 11% in 2002, I think.
That's right. So we may be looking at the opposite of that, hopefully not to the extreme of Burke County. We'll keep you apprised of that as it goes along.
But this is the deflation that some economists have talked about. So here we are at deflation and none of us are surprised. It's just, you know, it's been a logical progression the last six or eight years.
Wood, that were the only thing I was losing sleep over. As you all know from the information that we send out regularly, and I really appreciate Ms. Yadi Fox playing a great role in bird dogging legislation and keeping us plugged in and in their ears, but I don't have good news on the privilege license. As a matter of fact, today, the omnibus bill that it's tucked up in passed on second reading. So it is, it is growing, it is moving along and progressing. The amendment that was put forward that the mayor mentioned was taken off the table and so it's not in the bill that's moving forward.
No privilege license tax, no, none?
No, well, it's $100, flat $100. The League had had some conversation and they'd gotten, they'd gotten a representative to sponsor an amendment, but then he withdrew it that would have at least taken into account the number of employees. So it would have tried to look at scale to say, if you have X number of employees, you know, you pay a fee per employee. But apparently that didn't get any traction. And I can talk about this all night and I won't.
Well, that can in effect actually bring some people's license tax up.
Yeah, it will.
Oh, it will.
Yeah.
It'll expose some people to tax that did not ever pay.
So at this point, it looks like the General Assembly will pass that bill and if they do, that will take $1.1 million out of the city of Hickory's budget. As we've talked before, that $1.1 million is largely collected from Sam's, Walmart, Target. You know, we've kind of gotten this black eye of being this city that's out here charging all of our businesses this privilege license, but the reality is because we're a regional shopping hub, we have all of the retailers and so we collect a large amount of money. That's just the nature of the fact that we're a retail hub for our MSA. And all of the cities that kind of fall in this category are retail hubs. So it's not anything that the city has done, it's just the fact that we're a retail hub and this has been a good revenue source for the city all these years. When I heard it called a hidden tax, I pulled out the bill that we sent to Bentonville, Arkansas and showed that to the individual and said, no, nothing hidden about it. It goes to Bentonville, Arkansas and they write a check back to the city of Hickory and they pay it. It's not hidden. They know exactly what they're paying and they don't mind.
Well, at the League of Municipalities, they showed a chart of the impact on cities and far and away, the greatest impact in the state, as far as city percentage impact, was us.
Yep.
Now, they call it a hidden tax because theoretically, if you levy that tax on the businesses, they mark it up. They put it into the cost of their products, mark it up and charge you for it. Well, the same way they charge for their employees and they charge for maintenance and everything else. But the problem with the argument is they are charging us for property tax that they pay too. Nobody has proposed eliminating businesses' property taxes. So it's just, it's a sticky issue. By way of perspective, not every city in the state charges property, privileged license at all. And the ones that do, it's all over the board as far as what they charge. I mean, I have seen some exorbitant numbers quoted from some cities. So the legislature's getting lobbied hard to bring what the people who are paying it consider fairness.
Kind of unusual that those businesses would choose to cover those cities that are collecting it.
Well, they claim, they claim that some cities in fact are leaving, or some businesses are leaving cities that charge high privilege licenses. Ours is not on the high side.
You think we'll see a lot of price rollbacks then because it's down low?
Yeah, rolling them back every day.
Sure. Everything ought to be free by now.
So that's the summary of a 214-page document. It's available on the city's website and we have paper copies available at Patrick Beaver and the Ridgeview Libraries. Appreciate y'all's attention to it and I'll be happy to have further discussion or answer questions and be happy to field questions as you review the document and come across things that we'd like to discuss. Thank you.
You didn't say these are on the libraries? Can they be checked out? Is there enough copies of these to check?
No, I think you got to sit there and go through it. I think we only have a handful at each library, but the whole document's available online as well. And I do, I do need to take action and call for the public hearing on the 3rd.
Will you just run through the timeframe, the, which is, so choose, call for a public hearing, have a public hearing and then we have to have a budget in place by...
July 1st.
July 1st.
Right, so you've got, you've got your June 3rd meeting to have the public hearing and have discussion and then you've got your June 17th meeting if you need it to have further discussion and debate on the budget. Or you could have a special workshop in between, whatever you wanted to do to come to decisions on it.
Well, I believe we have a public hearing June 3rd to take some action.
I'll second that.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. This is a very intimidating-looking and in fact, somewhat heavy document. But if you, if you go through it and just look at it page by page and you study books on that particular page, there's some very interesting stuff in here that's not hard to understand. And there's also some stuff in here that's hard to understand. But I would suggest that you not just be intimidated and say, I'm not going to look at it because there's a lot of good stuff that's easy to understand. And as I said, we've got index cards out there with every council member's, sorry to remind everybody, folks, every council member's phone number. Please, if you have questions about the budget, if you have questions about inspiring spaces, bond referendums, population growth, call us and let's talk about it. We're not, we're not trying to keep any secrets. I think it's pretty far sighted here to show we think next year's going to be tough. And it'd probably be easier to say, well, let's see if we can slide by this year and hope something better happens next year. And why bring it up if it ain't already happened? But we are trying to be very candid with you, seriously. Thank you, Mr. Wood and all.
Karen.
Karen Hurley.
I got to say this. I come in early and I leave late a lot of times and for the last month, I cannot be caring to work and she's always here when I'm leaving. I mean, that's just, she just, at this time of year, she, I think she, I don't think she was joking when she said she slept in her office a couple of nights ago. She comes close to it. So we really appreciate that. She does a fantastic job.
Okay, appointments. I'd like to, by request of the nominee, I'd like to appoint Susan McDonald to the at-large representative position on Parks and Recreation Commission. Bill was serving on that and in fact, Susan said that even down to the last couple of weeks, she was driving him around town and they were looking at parks to think of ways to improve it, to get more usage, clean it up, whatever. So I said, well, if she wants to be on that committee and as long as she has served the people of Hickory in her role, I would like to nominate her. Any other nominations tonight?
I'd move approval of Susan to the Parks and Recreation.
Second.
Motion by Lail, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion's carried unanimously. Matter's not on the agenda? General comments? Our taste of Hickory was great?
It was.
Record crowds, maybe?
They did a great job.
And that's a good venue for it, isn't it?
And the weather cooperated. It was like so afraid it was going to rain and then the last sun came out, it was beautiful.
Well, it was beautiful, babe.
They did a great job.
Any other council members have a comment? Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Motion by Meisner, second by Zagoroli, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thanks for being here.
That's right. I'm proud of you.
I've seen this, most of us have seen that.